Oh, there's the cemetery. Yep. There we go.
The June 19th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, no one nation, under God, indivisible, but for the sake of justice for all.
The city council provides residents an additional opportunity to address the council during our open podium, which is held prior to the start of each of our council meetings. Typically, this is the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and the open podium time is 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you're interested in addressing the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, we will open the floor to unscheduled speakers like we did tonight. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised, and if you have any questions, again, contact the city manager's office. The first thing we have on the agenda tonight is a proclamation regarding the Relay for Life, and I'd first like to read the proclamation, and then we will have some people from Relay for Life come up. Whereas Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life of Eden Prairie supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer, and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life helped fund more than $130 million in cancer research last year, now therefore be it resolved that the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim July 13th and 14th, 2012 as Relay for Life Days in Eden Prairie, and encourage us citizens to participate in the Relay for Life event at Eden Prairie High School on July 13th to the 14th, 2012, signed by myself as mayor. And tonight, we have Sue Ellen Toppings coming here to address us about Relay for Life.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city council members, for your time tonight in proclaiming the 13th and 14th to Eden Prairie Relay for Life days. I'm Sue Ellen Toppings, and this is my co-chair Anne Mice.
Hi.
Our third chair for the Relay for Life is Jeannie Anderson, and she couldn't make it tonight. We all, and our committee chairs, hope that each of you, your families, neighbors, coworkers, friends, and everyone else you know, will join us as we celebrate the fundraising our Eden Prairie teams and participants have done during this relay season. The American Cancer Society's Relays for Life were created to be a large-scale fundraiser for which participants create a team and raise funds prior to the event. At relays, teams are encouraged to keep at least one team member walking around the track all night long, although there are no relay police. The relay in itself is a big celebration of our survivors, remembering our loved ones, and a time to commit to fighting back against the disease. This year, we hope that the Relay for Life raises $60,000 or more, have 33 or more teams, and 300 or more participants. We still have work to do to meet these goals, and our teams are working hard to reach these numbers, as well as their own fundraising goals. The proceeds from all Relays for Life go to the American Cancer Society, whose mission is fourfold: number one, to help people stay well by educating them on ways to prevent cancer and how to detect cancer early; number two, to help people get well by providing accurate and timely informational, emotional, and practical support services; number three, to fund cancer research to further understand its causes, determine how best to prevent it, and discover more ways to cure it; and number four, advocacy, encouraging federal and state lawmakers to fight cancer by funding cancer research, creating smoke-free communities, and improving access to affordable and quality health care for everyone facing cancer. The 2012 Eden Prairie Relay for Life opens the gates at the Eden Prairie High School's beautiful outdoor stadium at 4 o'clock PM on Friday, July 13th. The opening ceremony begins at 6:30 PM, followed by a live band's music, while families and friends visit, play games, bid on silent auction items, have dinner, and do some last-minute onsite fundraising. Upon sundown at 9:30, we will light the luminaries and focus our attention on our loved ones who have survived cancer, honor those who have succumbed to the awful disease, and give thanks to those who have cared for cancer patients. Activities and games, like a spaghetti eating contest, zumba dancing, and others. More fundraising and all-night camaraderie will commence once again around 10 o'clock PM, and will go all night long for those who are brave enough to stay. Eden Prairie Relay for Life will wrap up with our closing ceremony and commitment to fighting back against cancer at 6 o'clock AM on Saturday, the 14th, and then it will be naptime. The Eden Prairie Relay for Life is meant for people of all ages. It is a community event that promotes community spirit, healthy and active living, and is our own attempt at stomping out cancer. We truly appreciate the support from you, Mayor, and city council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your work on this event.
You're welcome.
I don't think there's anybody in the community that hasn't been touched by cancer in some way, whether it's themselves, a loved one, or a close friend-
Exactly.
...that has had cancer. So, it's a wonderful event, and that luminary walk is particularly poignant.
Yep.
So, thank you very much, and I hope people will participate.
You're welcome.
And here's a copy of the proclamation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to add? Mr. Getchell.
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple items. Actually, one to add, one revision. One of the golden rod items is an update to the MAC agreement for the Mitchell Road improvements. It stays on consent. And then, we're adding, it's in the annotated agenda but not on the regular agenda, the city attorney would like to add, an ordinance amending our city code related to criminal history checks. So, we'll have two ordinances that he'll be covering tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, I'd like to add a quick member report.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the council workshop held on Tuesday, June 5th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same evening?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, we have a member of the HPC, the Heritage Preservation Commission, who is going to address us. Ed Muehlberg.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I don't know if there is a PowerPoint that goes along with this, or if not. Basically, here to give you kind of a brief review of what we've done in the last, it's been over a year-plus since anybody from the HPC's given you an update, so we have got quite a bit to, thank you, to basically review from what we've done all of 2011 and what we've done so far this year and the remaining part of the fiscal year. So, let's see if I can figure out how to do this, or am I playing? There we go. Basically, as the HPC, we're the stewards of all the historical sites in the city, and our charge is to, you know, basically watch over those for maintenance and any of the major changes or minor changes that occur, and in regards to addressing any recommendations that we pass along to you in regards to any of the certificate of appropriateness and items like that. Basically, as a summary of what we've done in 2011 since we last presented, we've been basically monitoring all the remodeling projects in the Cummins Grill House. Basically, have been several certificate of appropriateness applications for the Smith-Douglas Moore House, for the demolition of the workshop, and the expansion of the parking lot. We do an annual assessment of all the city-owned properties for their maintenance and needs. As being part of a CLG government, we are required to send a representative to the State Historic Preservation Conference, and Mark McPherson went last September, I believe, to Faribault. We've completed the monitoring of the Glen Lakes Children's Camp, the work out there, and reported that to the State Historic Preservation Office. Completed local designations for Glen Lake Children's Camp and the Outdoor Learning Center at Starling Lake. Completed, commenced work, excuse me, on local designation for the Dorm Kemper House, and assisted the owner of the Goodrich Ramus Barn with his rehabilitation projects. You've probably seen some of those as you drive by. And good thing we haven't lost any properties this year, so that's just always a positive. Oops, there we go. Kind of skipped ahead here, I think. A second. And for, basically, starting in January, we've been reviewing additional certificate of appropriateness applications and passing those along in regards to fire suppression at the Cummins Grill House, and interior modification, and then exterior minor modifications at the Cummins Grill. We've assisted the city in repairs for the foundation wall at the kitchen at the Cummins Grill House, and that's an ongoing process right now. Continuing assessing all the historic sites for their maintenance and repairs. Updated the certificate of appropriateness form, excuse me, and I'll show you that in a minute here, and the continued restoration of the landscape at the Cummins Grill House. The goal is to have all those plantings in by the end of this year. It will take a couple of years for that to actually naturally grow and to develop into the natural landscape that we're shooting for, so. The new certificate of appropriateness was developed to kind of tie into the revisions and the code that were done a couple of years ago for the historic properties. Basically, it's to streamline the review process. Instead of, it was a little cumbersome and a little outdated that we were doing before, we've updated the code to be more current standards, and the new COA basically allows for streamlining of it through the city, either major work or minor work. If it's minor work, then the staff can internally review it and take care of it, and minor work is standard maintenance items. So, it's not a long process just to take care of the property. Any major work then comes through the HPC, gets reviewed there, and gets passed on to you, so. And, whoops. And then, several examples of the COA, and it's kind of tried to be a little more friendlier in explaining the process, what's needed and when. This basically is online, I think, available at the front desk, and then the actual application form can be filled out online, and then goes through the staff, and then if it comes, if it needs to come through the HPC, then it does. So. And then, basically, to finish out the year, what we're looking at, we have to attend a Historic Preservation Conference, excuse me, and that's in Fergus Falls this year. We're going to continue to assist the Eden Prairie Historical Society with their work at the Cummins Grill House. We're going to complete the local designation for the Dorm Kemper House, and interpret a plan for the Dorm Kemper House as well. Annual report that's needed for SHPO and their State Historic Preservation Office. And we're going to look at the, with the new website, how can we better expand that to help illuminate some of the historic properties that we do have in the community. The website has a great mapping tool, and there's a lot of data there. I think we've been looking at ways to kind of, how can we tweak that or expand that a little bit to really, you know, add on to that information. Update the best management practices guidelines for the Cummins Grill House, and that's just basically a plan that the owners, whoever is occupying that property, it's a guideline for them to go through and understand what needs to be done and when for typical maintenance and major issues, and how to best proceed. And then, we're going to continue assistance at the kitchen addition, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Good presentation. Your group plays a very vital role in stewardship of these pieces of our past that are so interesting within our community, and I think it's obvious some of the projects that you've done particularly recently are wonderful things that have helped make these historical properties more accessible, more attractive, and more useful, so that more people will come out and use them, because that's really the goal. It's not, it's not to have these properties, it's to have people enjoy these properties and learn about our past.
Yep.
So, thank you so much for all that you do. You obviously have a lot on your plate, and you have some great plans for the next year. Thank you. Does anybody, oh, councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, I actually have two questions. Are we still seeking funding annually from SHPO and others?
Typically, we do seek funding, like CLG grants, where there's matching funds for, typically, it's labor or time for different items, and I'm trying to, I can't remember. Some of it's the designations, the best management practices, compiling those booklets, things like that. We're talking about some of the interpretive panels that need to be updated, and some new ones that might need to be added. That might be one that we're looking at for the next year plan, so.
I'm glad to see that we're still seeking funding from those sources, because that's exactly what it's there for, is for us to improve our historic sites. One other question.
Sure.
The book that we had published a few years ago, Eden Prairie Heritage, Eden Prairie's Heritage, do we still have copies of that, and do we still-
Yes.
-pass it around or sell it?
Yes, and we just actually, we talked about that last night, actually. We have, there's quite a few copies, and we're looking at different ways to get those out to the public. The First 100 Years was a book that was recently just republished, I believe. And talked with the Historical Society about when they're attending different activities to potentially sell those there, even some of the schools, updating their libraries. I know some of, they had copies in the past, and I think they've been pretty well beaten up. And then, just at different locations where we can get those out to the public, so.
Yeah, it's such a great resource, and we had received a grant to create that publication, and that was a lot of work that went into that, and I haven't seen one recently, so I wanted to make sure that we either still had them and we're distributing them, so.
Yes, yep, we've been working on it, it's not moving.
And you know, I'm really happy about, we started that vision a long time ago of really being, including our, all of our historic sites, or as many as we could, and opening them up to the public. So, I'm really happy to see that that goal has been achieved, and you're working to do that, so that people can access what we do have.
Yeah, the best way to save a historic site is to use it, so.
Absolutely is.
Right. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, what you said about internet, what new website intrigued me a little. Are we looking at all into a website tour of some of our historic properties, perhaps some pictures, maybe a few historic pictures of the property and what it currently looks like, maybe Indian mound trails or something where people could go, or even a picture of this is what an Indian mound is, which I don't know if I would recognize. But are we looking into doing something like that, so that, you know, when the properties aren't open, you could still get a little glimpse of them?
Correct, yeah, that, basically, was the intent. There's a nice map feature that lists all the parks and that, and the new website, that's really kind of interactive and eye-catching, and the idea is that we've bantered around a little bit, is, you know, to link the historical sites into that map as well. So, when you click on, you know, if you tab to the, kind of, historical tab on the map, it'll list all, show all the sites, you know, as a reference, and then you can click on it. The idea, ideal would be to then you get a brief, you know, an image, a brief little narrative, and then if you want to click for more additional information, you can do that, and, you know, just can navigate through the web that way.
I would love if we could put in some of the historic pictures and such that we have of, you know, what it did look like, and a few things of what it looks like now, just so people could, you know, get a fast idea, and then obviously, if any of the properties were going to be open in certain times, a list of that as well. I think that would be, you know, valuable to have, since we seem to have more web capability all of a sudden, and I know that we have quite a number of the pictures and things, it'd be nice to get some of that up into it.
Correct, yeah, we do have a lot of information, a lot of photographs that we, that, you know, it's data that we can easily get to the public through different means.
It's sort of something I hope could be almost added to your work plan over the next year, or something, to see how some of that could be, you know, actually put into it maybe with help from the Historical Society or something.
Yep, and that's actually something we've been working on a little bit, and just trying to figure out how to negotiate, navigate that through communications and that to get-
Expand it even what you want, please.
Okay. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yeah, and I really like the idea, because we have a rich archaeological history. I just wanted to just caution you about one thing. If we do identify our archaeological sites, there are, there's a state statute about being careful not to identify the burial mounds.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, so just be cautious with that.
Yeah, we discussed that, the public and private aspect of how, you know, what do you publish, and what do you show, and how, you know, there's things we have to resolve there somehow, so.
Mr. Getchell.
Mayor, I just want to go back to the grant point they were talking about earlier. We did recently receive really positive news that we received a grant to put a fire sprinkler system in the grill house. So, that was a joint effort, Historical Society, HPC, and the city, so that was a recent, very positive grant development.
Good, good. Thank you, and thank your commission for all the hard work they do, too. Thank you, Ed. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight. The first item is, under ordinances and resolutions, a reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 2.05 related to council compensation. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor, I wonder if we could probably go back to the claims quick before we get to-
For the what?
Claims.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question? Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Turilkins.
Aye. Okay. All right, now, ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Bills are paid, we're current. So, as you may recall, at the previous council meeting two weeks ago, the council gave direction to city attorney and staff to put together first reading of an ordinance related to council compensation, so I'll turn it over to the city attorney to cover this item.
Mayor members of the council, we took the direction that the council provided at the last meeting, that the salaries of the mayor and council member would be adjusted for the first time, I think, since 2002, to be the average of the four cities, and I don't have that list in front of me, that were on the comparison sheet of comparable cities of the same size as Eden Prairie. That sheet had Eden Prairie as the fifth one, so we took Eden Prairie out of that computation, added up those salaries divided by four, and arrived at the amounts that you see in the ordinance, putting them into monthly amounts and rounding it off instead of having odd numbers, so basically rounded it down to $625 a month for council members and $895 a month for the mayor. The, pardon me, 895, it's now $625, and after December 31st, it'll be $895 for the council, for the mayor, go from $825 now to $1,125, and those take effect in 2013. We then also deleted the provision that provided for the $60 a month technology, communication facilities, equipment stipend, so that is wrapped into the salary. Wasn't added to any of those amounts as we did the computation, but it was considered that was to be wrapped in as the council discussion, that this was an all-inclusive amount. So, we deleted that section, that's code section 205 subdivision 3A was deleted. The, so the, this is the first reading of the ordinance. If you have questions about it, stand ready to answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you, and the Budget Advisor Commission provided us with a lot of data regarding salaries paid to council and mayors throughout the metropolitan area, and it might initially, when you look at what we're doing tonight, seem odd that we're just going on the basis of four comparable cities of about our size, but if you actually looked at the 20 or so that were on the list, we weren't at average with all those communities, we were way low, even amongst that larger group. So, I'm really comfortable with these amounts that we're talking about. In terms of percentage increase, it's a fairly hefty percentage increase, but we haven't had an increase since 2002, I think was the last time we voted on one, and as I was mentioning to another council member, if we were getting paid $1 a year and raised it to three, that would be an enormous percentage increase, but that doesn't mean it's an unreasonable salary. So, this raise would put us at a very comparable level to a lot of the metropolitan cities. We're very much at the average, at the mean. We're not high, we're not horribly low. Probably in five years, we'll be really low again, and we'll be hanging back and doing this again in 10 years. So, I think it's appropriate to at least go to the mean of comparable-sized cities at this point. Councilmember Case.
I just want to be clear in terms of the percentage or whatever that gets out there. So, currently, it's almost like it's not apples to apples in a way, so what I'm reading here says that our current salary for a council member, $625, going to $895, but you just said you wrap in the technology, so in truth, it's not really $625 to $895, it's seven-something. What is that? Like, currently, what do council members receive total package or whatever then?
Well, the technology stipend was $60 a month, so that would be $685 for council members currently, and $885 for the mayor currently.
So, it's a $685. And then, the other piece of that not true increase is that the meeting pay was taken out, what, a year or two ago, which amounted, realizing that different people claim different things, but amounted to different people, anywhere from 50 to 100 a month. But I mean, the numbers that's actually going up is actually significantly smaller than this, because we're wrapping everything in.
That's correct.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Aho.
Just one comment, and that is that I do like that it's all-inclusive and that there's no, no special little pieces here or there, and there's no meeting pay, there's no stipends, it's just, you know, it is what it is, and I think that's very transparent, and I think that's a good way to go, so I'm glad that it's set up that way.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I was just curious. Since we seem to do this once every 10 years, I, in fact, I forgot about the technology to roll in, but I added into the amount, you know, sort of an average meeting pay in 2002, and then added 2% for eight years, going off the two years that employees didn't get a raise, and it actually came within $15 of this.
Okay, good.
So, it seems like, I know that earlier in the decade, employees are getting more like 3%, 4%, you know, things were different back then, but I just decided to, since that had been more austerity, and, you know, it was actually, I was surprised how close it was.
Yeah, that's amazing.
And then, again, this does not take effect until January 1st, so the law says it cannot take effect until after the next election.
Right, right. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Section 2.05 of the city code relating to salaries of mayor and council members.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. A motion passes. Okay, our second item under ordinances is, I believe, Mr. Russos.
Your honor, councilmembers, we're presenting tonight for a first and second reading, an ordinance to amend City Code Section 2.33, which provides authority to obtain criminal history information. The, Section 2.33 currently authorizes the city manager to obtain criminal history background information on employees, potential employees. It's limited to those who are considered finalists for the job, have a background check on those people. And then, in addition, the ordinance was set up with mandatory and discretionary functions or categories. And mandatory were the finalists for employment, and discretionary were other categories, people working with money, people who had access to private areas of City Hall, et cetera, people working with vulnerable individuals. And then, the other category for which the city regularly does background checks is in relationship to licensing. And so, not all the licenses that we issue are background checks done. For instance, we issue licenses for scavengers, and we don't do background checks on scavengers. There's no reason to do that, but for scavengers, relates to septic systems, don't ask me why.
Oh, like a scavenger hunt.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, that's what I thought. In all these years, no one's ever asked me about that section of the code.
Okay.
But for liquor license applications, background checks are done, peddlers and solicitors, tobacco sales. So those kinds of, gambling, those kinds of things where they are highly regulated and the state recognizes there's an important regulation function, or where people are knocking on doors and going door to door. And the, at the time, and so laws have become more sophisticated, concerns about privacy of information have become more prevalent in the day-to-day operation of government. And so in consulting with the BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, they recommended some changes in our ordinance to conform with their current practices. And that amounts to the fact that the data will be more highly restricted in terms of who can perform the background checks, where the information is kept, and to whom it's released. So the background checks have to be done by the police chief or his designee within the police department. The information is maintained in the police department and not released to the administrative department, for instance, for employment purposes, other than a summary of the information that would identify a reason that you might want to take into consideration in terms of hiring or in terms of licensing. But the actual raw data remains with the police department. And then the third element was that the background check that the police chief does, the police chief can only do it if it's required by law. And an ordinance is a law. And so only those background checks that are required by the city ordinance can be done by the police chief. So in revising the ordinance, we took a hard look at the mandatory and discretionary functions, and it was hard to craft how a discretionary review could be a quote "required review" that the police chief would do. And so we thought about making all those discretionary mandatory. And then I met with staff telephonically, had several conferences about, okay, tell me, because I'm not here when you're doing all of this, tell me which ones you really do run. Which ones does the manager say, yes, I have the discretion to order it and I will order it? And what we determined was that in all those discretionary categories, they really all related to employees, and that we didn't need to have that category. So the revised amended ordinance provides for background checks on employees, whether full-time or part-time, those who are finalists for that, and paid-on-call firefighters. That will change in October. Our designation of those will be as employees, those individuals be employees. But because we're going through a recruiting process right now, I didn't want to interfere with being able to do background checks on those. So we kept that language. And then on licensing, and we limited it as it is stated in the ordinance to alcohol, tobacco-related products, peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants, gambling, and pawnbrokers, and precious metal dealers. The ordinance sets out that the restrictions on the access to the data, and that also you need the consent of the individual on whom you're conducting the background check. So someone comes for employment and gets to the finalist position, and you say, okay, now, we need for you to consent to a background check. With the number of recent hires we've had in high-profile positions, all those individuals had to consent to a background check in order for them to be considered for employment. And it's a requirement that they, that we obtain their consent. Otherwise, we cannot do the background check. And the same with the licensing. We need their consent in order to do that. The ordinance itself in, was passed by the attorney at the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension last night. I sent it to her and discussed it with her several times this morning as we were continuing to have discussions amongst staff to reduce the number of categories, get rid of those discretionary functions. And they found the ordinance to conform to their process. There was one last-minute change, a typographical matter in subdivision four, where licensing wasn't referenced in the last line and needed to be, so we added that. But this would be a first and second reading of the ordinance. And so in order to have a first and second reading, we need unanimous consent. And I would also say that the passage of the ordinance is important to the city's operation, continued ability to be able to do proper hiring and licensing. And without an amended ordinance in place, we do not have the authority in the police department or administration department to run those background checks. We would have to make requests directly to the BCA and pay a fee per check for them to run it. It would take a little more time. So we wouldn't be shut down entirely, but it would be best if we had the authority tonight.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Russell? I don't have any questions on the need for this, but you said something that caught my ear. You said something about firefighters, come fall, they're going to be employees, did you say?
I think the classification is changing from paid-on-call to they're just being called employees, if I'm correct.
So is that just a legal technicality, or do we cease to be a completely volunteer fire department?
No, I think it's a legal, I think, I've always, I've act, I've actually always wondered about really what the distinction is between paid-on-call and employee. Plus, you do have the rotating duty shift coming into play.
Yeah.
So you've budgeted for that. So there'll be compensation for those. And so I think that pushed the decision where you've got these people who are putting in more than being paid on call, they're being paid on a rotating basis. So it doesn't have an impact, as I understand it, with respect to actually what's going on. It's a personnel department way of dealing with this new development by a duty crew.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to this, Mr. Getchell?
Yeah, no, Mayor, Mr. Russell said that correctly. So I think that there's always been some questions as to how we even currently classify, you know, the volunteer firefighter. But with the duty crew, as we've said to many people, these are the same people. They're just going to be assigned different shifts at the fire station. So we're not moving to a full-time police department. That is not the case.
Fire department.
We are a full-time police department.
[laughing]
And we're not moving to a part-time police department.
Yeah.
Can you hear me for the correction?
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I would move to adopt the first and second reading of the ordinance amending City Code Section 2.33 relating to criminal history checks, and adopt resolution approving summary ordinance for publication.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next area is appointments, and we have some students to appoint to our commissions for the 2012-2013 school year. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. One of our, one of the programs that we're very proud of having is having students in Eden Prairie, serving on almost all of our different commissions throughout the city, provides, we think, a valuable education to students to see how the civic process works, and also adds some value to our commissions as well. And typically, we ask for applications in April through May, as they finish out their school year, to then come back and serve a fall or spring term. So the fall term would be September to December of 2011, or and/or January to April of 2012. So we do have some people that would like to serve a full term, some that would just may want to serve the one seasonal term. So we had several applications, and we're happy to say we found a spot throughout all the different commissions for our students. And we have a few returning students, but mostly new students. So we're very happy to see that. And we're going to have an orientation for all these students in the late summer. And we ask that you move for appointment to all these different commissions tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion?
We usually go one by one.
Yeah. You want to start, Brad?
All right, I'll start. Appoint to the Conservation Commission Natalie Sell for the spring term, Sarah Schmidt for the fall term, and Saida Swari Thun Guntala to the fall and spring terms. And?
Appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Kevin Gadel, Peter Humbert, and Emily Reuter for fall and spring terms.
And appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Melissa Berman and Leanne Zhang for the fall and spring terms. And?
Appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Christina Bush for the fall term.
Appoint to the...
Go on.
I was just going to let you keep going.
Oh, because there's another one.
There's another one.
Oh, I, oh, I was just going to let you, oh, there is another one. Wow, it's perfect. And I was trying to be nice. And Jamie Bernard and Camry Vlasic for the fall and spring terms. And?
Appoint to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Natalie Townsend for the fall term, and Yassim Atif Bahid, Roseanne Awad, and Vi Noygan for fall and spring terms.
Second of all.
We have to all second it.
Oh, we all second.
Second seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Reports of council members. Councilmember Nelson.
Um, yes, I think we all received an email from a resident about property in their neighborhood that was bank-owned and not being lived in. And I know there's unfortunately a number of those properties around town. Some of them are for sale or for rent, or lived in part-time and being cared for. Others are not being particularly cared for or not for sale or for rent. And those are the properties that worry me more, that don't have people coming in and out of them. I know I've spotted a few around town. And I'd sort of like to ask, you know, how the city is, do we know where these properties are? How fast is the Assistant Weed Inspector actually going out to look, you know, for properties that are clearly not being mowed regularly? I know that some places actually have some kind of, a registrar for banks, you know, once they take over property, and, you know, while they own it. And we know that, you know, if one property in a block goes down, everything goes down a little, and a whole block goes down and the surrounding blocks. So it's obviously something we don't want to happen. So what exactly are we doing, and is there anything more we should be doing to find out from banks from these properties? And I, you know, I'm not so concerned about the ones that have a for-sale sign out front, it's the ones that don't.
Sure. Councilmember Nelson, I think that, first of all, we obviously do have some foreclosed properties in our community, but not that many. And obviously, we're doing much better than neighboring communities. But we do work with our inspections department, Park and Recreation, do work with the banks to find out what those properties are, and actually have, you know, different employees across different departments that keep abreast of that situation. In the particular email that you received, and related to probably grass or mowing, in those instances in the city, I think we do have sometimes a difficult time being able to respond to those on certain occasions, especially when we're getting a lot of rain and the grass is growing. So our current protocol would be, when it reaches that 10-inch limit, we do notify the homeowner that they do have 10 days to take care of the issue, or the bank, or whomever, whether it's a homeowner or a bank. And in that situation, if they're not able to resolve that concern, we will go in and we will mow, and we will assess that property. I think luckily, I think of the 19 properties, and this isn't just for foreclosure, but I think it's related to maybe all notices for high-grass property, I think 17 of those took care of the problem within 10 days. And then we went to two of the properties. And I don't know if that particular one on Christie Lane we went to or that was taken care of on its own, but it was taken care of recently. It has been. So we are aware of that. We try to work with the different banks. I would say that, and I know we're talking about this at a future work session, we talked about rental licensing, but I think also point to sale inspections is a program we're going to talk about at a workshop that adds another tool in our toolbox, when there are sales of properties or pending sales, that we can deal with some of these issues as well. So we'll be talking about that in the near future as well. But the point is, in many cities deal with this, you have a certain amount of length of grass to when the city comes in with a letter. And then even though there's time to take care of that, which we think is a pretty tight window, you've got to give someone time to do something, the grass does keep growing. So we do hear from the neighbors, and we do try to get out there as soon as we can. But we understand that's very visible to people in the neighborhood, and we want to see those properties taken care of as well.
Are we aware of often where they are? Because I assume foreclosed properties probably haven't paid property taxes either in most instances. So do we keep up with, you know, how exactly do we keep up with, you know, which properties have been sort of abandoned even maybe before full foreclosure?
I'm not, the taxes sometimes take a while to show up in the system as being delinquent. But I do know, for instance, I can say we have 67 foreclosures in the city right now that we know about and we're aware of. And, but I'm not sure, I don't have the answer to how that relates to where they would be with the tax situation.
But, so we're generally having somebody keep an eye out to make sure that these aren't getting more and more run down. What do we do if there's a property that's bank-owned? And I can think of one, it's getting pretty rundown and overgrown, and you name it. It's, you know, it's the kind of place that you sort of hate to see, not that it was a showplace beforehand. But, you know, what do we do when a property like that, it's not for sale, it's not for rent, it's not being lived in, it's not being cared for?
So, you know, whether it's our, you know, exterior inspection program, or whatever program we use for code enforcement, no matter the situation, we will go out, and if there are violations or issues related to the upkeep of the property, we will enforce those. And it can, again, take a little bit longer with a bank, but whether it's a bank or someone who's out of town, or someone who's not selling it, we'll follow up in the same manner we would at any issue related to exterior maintenance, or grass, or other concerns. I can get more detail on what we may be looking for inside the property if we need to. But as I said, we're usually made aware of what is currently in foreclosure and what we're dealing with.
Good.
And then again, if anybody, whether it be the public, a council member, anybody else, has an address on any particular property, you know, obviously that's an anonymous complaint, and we will follow up with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for bringing that up. I've been talking with Mr. Getchell about this, too. And one thing that I would like to add is, in the spirit of trying to become a Yellow Ribbon community, I think it would be nice if it is a situation where it's somebody who is serving our country overseas and is not, the property owner is serving our country overseas and cannot keep up the house. Ideally, the neighbors could work out an agreement with that person to take care of their property, the exterior of their property while that person is gone. But, you know, if push comes to shove and they can't, and that doesn't happen, I don't feel too bad about sending our people in to do some lawn maintenance occasionally, as long as it's okay with the property owner.
And that is one of those great ideas that they're talking about with the Yellow Ribbon, if they get that network of veterans. And that's one of the issues, can be property, transportation, other issues. So we can definitely pass that along to that group.
Okay.
That would be a good thing to participate in.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, some of those families are pretty stretched.
Right, right.
And if I could just add, there is a provision in your ordinances for the emergency securing of buildings that present a danger of life safety to individuals in the community, whether that's people living there or the community. That's a little more involved process. It involves the council actually declaring the property to be hazardous, and then presenting the matter to the court to obtain an order to do that, securing of the property. We have brought that to the council several times over the course of years, so it's not used very often. But in extremely serious, dangerous cases, then we do exercise that authority.
All right, thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Ellis, Highway 101 updates.
Thank you, Mayor. At the previous city council meeting, there was a discussion about Highway 101. I was asked to come back with an update for the council to really address three things. And that is the history of Highway 101, as it pertains to the discussion of a reconstruction project. project, what's happening now, and then really, where do we want to go from here? So maybe to take a few steps back in time to about the year 1999, there was an effort with the city of Eden Prairie, the city of Chanhasan, the two counties of Hennepin and Carver, and Minnesota Department of Transportation to take a look at this roadway and what needs existed and what did we want to do with it. And at that point in time, SRF was hired, a consulting engineering firm, to take a look at it, and they came up with six alternatives of the roadway. One of the alternatives being just mill and overlay it, leave it as-is, all the way up to a five-lane inner corridor through that section between Highway 62 and Highway 5. And one thing to keep in mind is that this road is and always has been a state highway. So ultimately, the jurisdiction rests with Minnesota Department of Transportation, but all five of us were in the room trying to determine how to move forward with that. And there were two meetings where the public were invited, and that was September 28th and I believe September 29th of 1999, where these alternatives were presented and we received comment. And in looking through the notes of those meetings, it was kind of a lukewarm reception. Most of the people that were against any improvements were people that lived along the corridor, and their concerns were noise, increased traffic, no accommodations for traffic signals along the corridor. But there were a lot of people that recognized, yeah, there's a need to do something out here. Shortly after that, I believe it was in January and December of 2000, the city of Chanhasan hosted their own series of public meetings with neighborhoods that live along that corridor. And they received a lot of comments from the adjacent property owners. They didn't want to see that right-of-way line moved, they didn't want to see the trees removed, they really didn't want to see anything done with this roadway as far as an expansion or widening was concerned. And so ultimately, what happened was, the study essentially stopped. There was a trail put in on the west side of Highway 101, on the Chanhasan side, and that was it. And that's really the history. So move forward to today and what's happening now. It's still a Minnesota Department of Transportation roadway. It's still a jurisdictional boundary between the two counties and the two cities. And of course, we had a recent fatality out there. And we have had discussions with the city of Chanhasan about, you know, what do we want to do with this roadway? And Minnesota Department of Transportation has been approached and asked to evaluate the speed limit. Right now, it's posted 45. Is that the appropriate speed limit for this type of a roadway? And so they are conducting a speed analysis, and they'll be providing their recommendation of whether we should leave it as-is, reduce the speed limit, or perhaps increase. But we haven't heard back from them yet. Another thing that they've been asked to do is evaluate all the accidents that we've seen in the past few years along this corridor to determine, is there some type of reoccurring accident that we can correct? Is there a pattern? Is there something that we need to address and something that is fairly obvious? So they're conducting that analysis, and again, we'll meet with them and discuss what type of patterns they're seeing. Another thing that will be happening in the near term for the future is a project at Pleasant View Roadway, Road. And that is kind of the major collector that serves Chanhasan and ties into 101, almost to the northern section, almost up to Highway 62. So they did receive a grant to make some improvements to the roadway, some right-turn lane, left-turn lane improvements, some trail connection improvements. And most recently, it appears that they've received approval from the DOT to install a, what I'll call, an amber pedestrian flashing beacon. It's one of those signals that a pedestrian can walk up to, push the push button, activates a flashing yellow beacon just to drive, bring driver's attention to the fact that there's a pedestrian crossing, and then they'll put in a marked crosswalk. So it appears at this point in time that that improvement will be made at Pleasant View Road. So moving forward, where do we want to go from here? I think right now, it's a very emotional issue. I think that we need to wait, let the analysis happen, sit down and discuss some of the findings with Minnesota Department of Transportation, see if there are some improvements that can be made, maybe it's some opening up some sightlines, maybe there's some trees that need to be trimmed. What are some of those alternatives that we can look at as far as making pedestrian enhancements? And, you know, I guess, looking at the future, is there a need to improve this roadway? I think we're gonna have some resistance from the neighborhood. They're not gonna want to see this widen to a four-lane roadway. I think what maybe has changed from the past is the traffic volumes are actually dropping on this roadway, and so maybe there isn't a need for a four-lane road, which is one of the alternatives that was being pushed by all five jurisdictions initially. So I think that we can wait and see what the DOT has to say through their analysis and move forward once we have that information.
Great. Thank you for that update. Is, are there any questions for Mr. Ellis? Okay, thank you. You have the next item too, land alteration permit for Skyline.
Yes, one final item for me, and I know there are a couple people in the audience that will like to speak to this item as well, but maybe to introduce it, the request that's before you is for an land alteration permit for two properties that are on Skyline. These are two large parcels in the neighborhood of five acres each, I believe, and they are currently being looked at for a single-family subdivision. They have not had a preliminary plat approved, or they have not gone through planning commission with that yet. But there's an opportunity to exist with the fact that the Hennepin Village Site B is moving forward with their project, and they're actually removing 58,000 cubic yards of soil from that site, and they'll be trucking it up Eden Prairie Road to the north into a waste site. This project is actually looking to import 53,000 cubic yards of soil for these two projects. So there's an opportunity to exist, and as a keeper of the streets, if I can minimize the number of heavy truckloads that are on that road, especially Eden Prairie Road because of the condition it's in, I think it's worth taking a look at. And also, from the standpoint of impacting neighborhood with excessive construction traffic, that's, you know, generally one of the number-one complaints we get with these infill projects is the amount of construction traffic. So there would be an opportunity here to just move the soil across the street. And so city staff is supportive of the request. They are, there are stipulations that we'd like to place on it, and that's the fact that we want them to use the MAC property that has an access road for moving the soil onto the site. That is something that we would like to see. And I know that the applicant who is here tonight is in conversations with MAC, and there has been some agreement that's been forged about allowing them to do that. So we'd like them to pursue that option if the council does approve this tonight. So I do have Steve Boner, he represents the applicant here, maybe to give a little bit more explanation of what the project is. And I do know there's an adjacent property owner here that would like to approach the council as well. We did notice this to the area surrounding the project site, so that they were aware that this was before the council tonight.
Mr. Ellis, before we go on, could I ask a question? If trucks would be coming into this area anyway, bringing in soil, why does this need to be noticed to neighbors just because the soil's coming from across the street rather than from some other community?
This was a voluntary notice. There was no requirement that the neighborhood was noticed, but because generally, degrading is done after the plans have been approved, and we're not following that, and that's something that has been done before, we're not plowing new ground that has been done in Eden Prairie in the past. We just felt that the neighborhood had needed their due process and an opportunity to give input to the council on the decision.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Steve Boner with Marsh Cove LLC and Homestead Partners. And that was a pretty, that was a great summary. We have been working with Toll, the contractor with Toll. I've been working with MAC now for a couple months on discussions related to the MAC road and some other items related to the projects that we're submitting. The Meadows at Riley Creek is 23 lots, which will go to the planning commission next week and city council in July. And High Point is a project that Manley Development is doing. They are also on the same schedule as we are, but they're, it's a separate, totally separate project. But tonight, I'm here discussing both, presenting both, because we're working together for, to attain this material from Toll. And the MAC conversations have gone well. We received the first draft of the agreement late yesterday. I've reviewed it quickly. It is everything that we've discussed. I'll review it in more detail tomorrow and then continue the conversation with MAC. I don't foresee any problems with that. So basically, you know, some of the stipulations in the agreement are that we have to secure the road. It's not a public road, so in the evenings, we need to shut it down, barricade it again, lock it, erosion control, things like that. So only during construction hours and while work is taking place will that road be open. And I believe we're proposing one crossing of Eden Prairie Road, so we're attempting to keep all equipment, trucks, heavy equipment, off of Eden Prairie Road except for the one crossing. And the contractor will work with staff to set up whatever safety requirements are there for that crossing. Randy Slick has provided a list of requirements for the issuance of the permit itself, so we know what those are. I'm staying in communication with him. And basically, after, if this is approved, and if we, if our residential projects are approved in, at the next meeting and then in July, we would apply for the, I guess, the formal grading permit as you would normally do under a process. And that, it would be a separate permit for grading. We would come in and grade the sites per the preliminary plat that's been approved. So that would just be a little bit more detailed than what we're asking for tonight. Tonight, really, the goal is to bring the material to the property.
And when did you say the grading would be done?
The grading, the preliminary grading?
Yeah.
Well, it could take a few weeks to do this, but it's a little bit up in the air. We'd like to start as soon as possible. Toll, I was just notified today that Toll plans on starting grading next week. That's their, that's what they're attempting to do. I believe they're on track for that, and as soon as that starts, they're going to be ready to start hauling that material off-site. And it's just a matter of the contractor and what works best for them to haul it over.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for Steve? Mr. Case?
Steve or staff, I'm not sure.
Okay, go ahead, either one.
Well, I guess it's more staff, but, Mr. Ellis, I guess the concern from a council standpoint is always if we approve this larger change, so, I'm not even sure I was doing my math right, but is a truck 30 cubic yards maybe or something? I don't know, there's...
It'd be less than that.
Well, then there was 1,800, I think, truckloads on, at my 30, if I'm doing that right. But, so a lot of dirt dumped around these two fairly large properties, but if Manley and Meadows, for whatever reason, goes away, or goes bankrupt or walks away from this property, so all this dirt's there, I mean, we're all assuming that it's in the end gonna be needed, necessary for whatever project goes in, but it could sit there a long time potentially. In fact, when, I don't know if it was Toll at the time, or Dan Herbst wanted to move his dirt off initially, which actually in the end would've worked fine, but at the time, we were worried that it might not, or how long it would take before, you know, the stripped, gutted land would then be built on. And I think he backed away from that project. We never voted on that. But our concerns were this. So I guess I kind of want to know what's the safeguard for the city if nothing does happen, and for our residents living around there, if nothing does happen for years to come?
And one of our requirements that we have with this project and any other project is that the site be revegetated and stabilized. So that would be no different here, that once the soil is moved in, there's a timeframe or there's a clock that starts ticking before they have to actually have it revegetated, seeded, the mulch installed, so that you prevent some of that fugitive dust, your erosion. So those precautions have been taken into consideration with this project as well.
In the really unlikely event that they walked somehow in between that process so that it was never revegetated, is there a bonding process that took place?
There is, and we, as with all projects, we require that they post the surety should. For whatever reason, everybody walks away from the project, that the city's made whole, that we can actually go in and correct any deficiencies.
Well, that sure seems like a win-win for everybody.
And we're not talking about stockpiling. We're talking about placing it in a much more, you know, desirable manner. That is similar to what our plan will be in the end as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I understand we do have at least one person in the audience that wants to address the council on this, even though it's not a public hearing, we'd be glad to hear from you. If there's two, that's fine. Yep, come on up and give your...
Three.
Or three, whatever. Come on and give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chris Klein, 9700 Eden Prairie Road. I guess I'm directly on the High Point property, lines my property. And I guess my concern is that if they're taking all that dirt from Toll Brothers and they're really changing the topography there and, you know, putting it, placing it, they're gonna change the topography on the JMS site and the High Point site. High Point's right in my backyard, and they raise that, you know, that's a lot of truckloads. Good point, by the way, you made. And then, you know, is that 10 feet high plus a house? And they're bringing in, is this a special permit to get all this dirt in, or could I just raise my yard that high? So is that, is that gonna devalue my property, my land? Do I need to get an appraiser to find out after they get that dirt in there that that's, that I find out that that's, you know, not what it once was? The value of the land is not what it once was? I just don't think that's right, that they're bringing in that, you know, 52,000 yards. That's a lot. Yeah, they have the water, the drainage with the swale, and that goes around to a holding pond that fills up, and that dumps into Riley Creek, I guess, with all that fertilizer going into the creek. I think that it shouldn't be that steep, that they, they don't need, it's on a hill as it is. They don't need the, to be two feet over flood stage. I don't even think there's a flood stage there because it's all on a hill. Yeah, they could slope it a little bit, but to raise it up 10 feet is too much.
So just for clarification, is your house, the house, right to the east of 9765 Skyline?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and, you know, I have a hill where it's high at the top and it drains down, just, you know, but, just like they do. But, you know, how does that benefit me? Well, I don't think it does. Does it decrease the value? You know, I guess an appraiser would know on that. I guess, I guess that's my point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Case?
Well, it raises an interesting point broader than just what happens immediately to your property value, but during a development process, this would all be ferreted out, you know, so we would, they would come in and it would be a public hearing process, the neighbors would all gather around and say that, you know, the water flow's gonna change onto my land. And so all that would have the chance, in a public hearing way, to, at least in a government setting, receive the light of day. So now all this ground-changing potentially takes place outside of a public hearing process so that land can change and alter relative to its neighbors. And the only thing, and I'm not saying necessarily no to it, I just want to hear from staff that, you know, you've looked at this and you know that when that project comes in this summer or this fall, that what needs to take place with 58,000 cubic yards of soil has to take place when that project eventually comes in. So this is not a surprise, this isn't any problem if it sits forever, that in a regular development process which will come before us, this would have been part of it. You know, 'cause otherwise, it is out of a public hearing context, and it doesn't allow neighbors a chance to say, whoa, wait a minute, all this water's gonna come down now into my land, or this'll change, you know, the value of my land. They just have no recourse.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, I was, just to touch on some of those points, and I'll ask Mr. Boner to correct me if I'm wrong, because you know the development much better than I do. But we have looked at the drainage, and I don't believe that there's any runoff from these two sites that will be impacting Mr. Klein's property. Is that correct? Okay. And so I don't see any drainage change or any alteration in drainage patterns that would impact anybody's property, to be quite honest with you, as far as that's concerned. And the only reason this is forward and has staff support is because we know that Hennepin Village is, they will be removing 58,000 cubic yards, and they'll be hauling it through our town. And so there was an opportunity just to move it a very short distance across the street. As far as the possibility of the project, these two projects on Skyline moving forward, I don't know how feasible they are without this soil being imported. I think that's what makes these lots valuable, it makes this project move forward. So without it, I think it puts in jeopardy the project altogether. Mr. Boner, if you have anything to add to that? Mr. Bona, if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and if somebody could address the drainage issue.
I can't speak for all of the numbers on the Manley portion. That's a separate project. But I do know in general, our property, the rate of drainage and runoff is going to be a fraction of what it currently is. So once the plat is approved, the engineers have already gone through the calculations and shown, once the street is in with the pond and the storm pipes, the rate is significantly less than what currently exists on the property. I can only assume that the Manley property is the same, but I haven't seen the calculations. That's kind of a requirement as, as these ponds are built and how they're built and designed. I did attend the neighborhood meeting that Manley had, and we had four residents that showed up. Mr. Klein was one resident. Mr. Klein was the one that had the most concerns. Basically, the other three residents that showed up just had questions, but they didn't raise any concerns. And so we have notified residents, and, and we've been trying to be as proactive as possible about this.
And I would assume that if one of your projects actually do come in for full approval, that if the soil amount is an issue, and you need to take soil off of that property, that would be your expense, right?
To remove soil off?
Yeah, if they put too much, let's say, and so drainage is changing, and going into Mr. Klein's property potentially.
Yeah, absolutely.
If projections are that's going to do that, then you might have to remove some of that and regrade so that that doesn't happen.
Yes, absolutely. If we, and specifically on, on our project, if we were draining into the backyards of the woods at Riley Creek, the residents that live there, because we're not adjacent to Mr. Klein, yes, we'd be responsible for it. There will be silt fence all the way around. The grades match between existing, the properties to either side, the grades match, and then there's a swale, and, and the drainage then goes down this well to either the storm pipe or directly to the pond.
So that's why there will be less drainage overall?
Yes. And there's not, the High Points of the projects are not on the property line. They're towards the center of the property, so everything matches and then goes up from there. The road will be higher, and there'll be walkouts. Most of these lots will be walkouts, and, and they slope down to the property. So Mr. Klein's property will have, the grades match on the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's somebody else that wants to address us.
Thank you for the opportunity of addressing the council. My name is Claudio Moreno. I'm a property owner at 9767 Sky Lane, which is a property that is directly adjacent to the, to the project site. I certainly welcome the development in, in the area and the community, however, I'd like to see that site development to occur in an orderly fashion and within due process, as was mentioned a series of times already in this meeting. I don't have enough information to assess the impact on our property value, but certainly the prospect of a significant elevation of the land next to ours leads me, leads me to believe that there is a significant chance, or a negligible chance of a reduction in the value of our property, which certainly concerns me. Concerns me even more the fact that without due process, we're going to be, we're planning on transferring such a large quantity of dirt into literally the backyard facing, a property facing, facing our backyard. That has consequences in terms of the enjoyment of our house, anecdotal things like, I have a daughter with respiratory issues, so the prospect of dirt flying around without a plan behind it, and with the potential of this not going forward at all is certainly, is certainly not something that we're comfortable, that we're comfortable with. I understand that there are some incentives for the city to take care of the wear and tear of the roads, or avoid the wear and tear of the roads, and therefore try to do this in this way. However, I think we're, we're rushing the situation. I can think of several issues that we'd like the opportunity to understand better in the context of a public hearing. Including the Toll project and the two projects that were mentioned, High Point and the Meadows, we're going to be having about 100 houses in a very narrow area. Would like to understand how the city is thinking of the, about the impact in terms of transit road access. I know there are several road access issues that have been discussed, and to my knowledge, they have not been resolved yet. And they may not be resolved, and therefore, there is the potential for this pile of dirt sitting there without, without resolution on, on decisions. And, and integral plan in terms of parks and recreation, retail, road access, something that, that is part of a well, of a well-planned process as opposed to short-circuiting the process. Those are my, my concerns. Thank you very much for the opportunities.
Thank you for addressing us. Councilmember Case?
I just want to know what happens if something goes wrong. So I want to, in essence, I'll use Mr. Klein as a, as a symbol or metaphor here, but he represents in my mind contiguous neighbors. So I just would like to know from a city's perspective, so I want to make sure I hear it again, because I know there's bond money for the road and, and for, if they can't get access to the airport property, there's, they're going to ask for 125% bond to redo the road access that they will use. But, but I want to know if for some reason, these developers don't end up pulling the trigger, and they sell, or they walk, and, and it sits there, and then, for whatever reason, I can accept that the engineers are saying today that it will not impact Mr. Klein. But if I were Mr. Klein, or other contiguous neighbors, I guess I just want to know for sure, is the city going to be there for me and protect me if there are issues? So is there bonded money that if all this dirt gets dumped, and these developers, for some reason, walk, that the city would go in and make Mr. Klein whole?
And to answer that question, I don't know what Mr. Klein would need to be whole from if there's no drainage, yeah. You know, I, I guess to explain how this process would work, tonight is a request for a land alteration permit. They're working on a preliminary plat approval that the City Council and the Planning Commission and the public would have an opportunity to decide, you know, are these the size lots we want? Is this how we want the property final graded? And so that would be the opportunity to set final contours. And that is when the discussion about, well, we want it five feet high, not six feet high, that would be the opportunity for those comments to be made. The security that the city would be getting with this land alteration permit would protect against default on erosion and sediment control, the vegetation not being established, sediment leaving the site, things of those, of that nature.
But if the dirt gets dumped, and there is no development process this fall, that's my, that's my fear. And I get it, and, and the whole problem is, this is just out of order. If this was simply part of the development process, we'd do that, you know, 10 times a year. I mean, that's a routine part of making sure that all the safeguards are, are in place. This is out of order, and I just, you know, maybe it's a 1 in 10,000, I shouldn't be talking about this, but if I was Mr. Klein, or the neighbors around it, I'd be worried about the 1 in 10,000, because it's my, my house, my yard, and, and potential investment for land. And I just want to make sure if that unforeseeable happens, that the contiguous neighbors are protected.
There are no provisions to have that soil removed should the project not move forward?
And that's not, and from everything that, and if you walk down there, I mean, there's that dip. I mean, I don't, I don't see that, the city engineers I trust would never permit 58,000 cubic yards to be put into the land that can't hold it. I don't think we're worried about that. It's just if it gets plopped down and it's not smooth correctly, or that we don't exactly know how the water will flow, and something's wrong.
And we, excuse me, we do know that. We have a grading plan that shows the contours, where the soil will be located.
So they're going to actually make sure that this 58,000 cubic yards gets put in place for the permanent solution that the city foresees needing to be done on that land?
Yes.
And silt fences will be put in, and vegetation established?
Absolutely, yes.
So the very, I guess I'm looking for the worst-case scenario, is the silt fences sit there. You know, I think things stay there, but at least it's protecting the contiguous properties.
Yes, there are provisions for silt fence, for vegetation, for seeding, for mulching. There are all those provisions built in with this. We know what the contours of the, the slope of the soil that's being imported onto the site are. We'll ensure that it's actually placed that way, that vegetation is established once they're done grading. All of those provisions are in place.
And Mr. Russell, I, I mean, I realize we're liable, I mean, certain things the city can't be sued for if we're doing things in good faith as a body, and that's why you're here. But in any development agreement that we ever approve, if it goes wrong, I guess one could argue we did something wrong. But this is a little bit different because it's out of order. And I just want to make sure that if we tonight do something that results in quite a negative thing for the contiguous neighbors, that we're going to be there for them, because that's our job.
Well, I would head my light on, I wanted to address some of this to the points that you were raising and getting at. I think you're approving a grading of a piece of property. So you have to be assured that the grading that you're approving is going to be done in a manner that is acceptable to you, which really, in essence, means it has to be acceptable to your public works department, that it's a proper grading of the property, if that's only as far as it goes. And, and what I hear Mr. Ellis saying is that, from their view, it is.
It is.
Then, the second item, and I'm not sure that the normal security we get addresses this, but it would seem to me then, a condition would be that the security that you do get is also allows us to go in and draw on that security if the grading is not done in accordance with the plan that's submitted. Not that all the silt fences are up and all of that, but if it's not done per plan and it's not corrected, that we can go in and, and do that. And for that, we also need, as part of all this, a right of entry to go on the property and do that, because we would have that in a developer's agreement, which we would not have in this situation. So that would be an added item. I also, as part of it was being discussed, I mentioned to Mr. Ellis that I thought the, the conditions of the MAC agreement, your, the proposal before you tonight is that that's a condition that the MAC agreement be approved. I think the conditions of the MAC agreement ought to be your conditions as well, that the, I heard Mr. Bona addressing hours of operation, closing of the road, gating, and all of those things. I think those should also be your conditions so that, because I think the city's in a better position to enforce those kinds of things than MAC, we're more accustomed to doing that. So I, I think you need those additional protections in place. None of that will protect against what I heard the property owner talking about in terms of, will this development impact the value of my property? Everyone's, has a neighbor, and neighbors are allowed to do certain things with their property, and that may or may not have an impact on your property. Having an open vista makes your property perhaps more valuable, having a development next to it necessarily. Could increase it, it could decrease it, you never know. We just, our job is to make sure that that development is done properly, so that there isn't water drainage, so that there's not nuisances created by the development process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
I'm convinced if, if we're doing proper grading, you know, we're doing the vegetation, and we add this right of entry and such, I don't see any reason not to do this. If, if the regrading would be fine no matter what, then it's fine. And it certainly will be good for all the neighbors not having all the trucks taking all the dirt out, and then bringing another set of dirt all back in. That's going to affect neighbors far more than a proper grading of the land. And, you know, the second man said, you know, the Toll property, well, we've already approved that. That's where most of the houses are going. Five-acre properties can't have that many homes with access roads and things. So obviously, this area of town is going to change, but people, assuming they're taking adequate protections for their neighbors and everything else, do have the right to ultimately deal with their property in a way, and I'm at this point ready to go to a motion.
Okay, I think, do you want to wait till after the motion?
No.
Okay, you want to speak now?
I don't know if that's possible.
Okay, sure.
Because whoever makes the motion, just, I, Mr. Russell said it very well. And if those three conditions could be part of that, I think that would make, I think, all of us feel more comfortable.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson, you want to make the motion?
Move to approve land alteration permits for 9805 Sky Lane and 9765 Sky Lane, subject to recommendations as outlined, and subject to a right of entry for the city being added to that, and the conditions of the MAC agreement also becoming the city conditions, and...
Security to cover grading.
Oh, and security to cover grading and vegetation, and large enough for the bonds. So with this, I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council? Okay, hearing none. Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.[1780.63]